Good evening. It is Monday, August 26, 2019, 7:04 PM. And we are in the Nashua North Boardroom. I'm calling this meeting of the Board of Education to order. Mr. Guarino, can you please call the roll?
Ms. Oden.
Here.
Ms. Raymond.
Here.
Mr. Kaufman.
Here.
Mr. Kaufman is joining us by telephone. Are you by yourself tonight?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Mosher.
Yes, I'm here.
Mr. Mosher is joining us by telephone also. Are you by yourself tonight, Mr. Mosher?
I am.
Thank you. Ms. Van Twyver.
Present.
Mr. Guarino is here. Ms. Hohensie.
Present.
Ms. Timmons is not here. She's recuperating at home from surgery. We hope, we wish her well. Ms. Porter.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, Mr. Guarino. Mr. Guarino, could you please say the prayer? And Ms. Oden, could you please lead us in the prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you.
Before we say the prayer, I forgot other attendees.
Oh, sorry.
Dr. Mosley.
Yes.
Dr. McKinney.
Here.
Ms. Fitzpatrick.
Here.
Ms. Olgarra.
Here.
And also our student reps. Ms. Scales.
Present.
And Mr. Ead.
Here.
Okay. And please rise for our prayer.
Thank you, Mr. Guarino.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty of managing our educational institutions of our beloved city. In our common endeavors, may we find a spirit of unity and understanding which will enable us to face our multiple problems with an objective mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions by us will be for the betterment and greater happiness of all of our fellow citizens. Amen.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. All right. Thank you, everyone. And thank you all for being here on the first day of school. Welcome back. If you're anything like my kids, you must be exhausted. It was a very long first day. But hopefully, we can move through this quickly and get everybody home and in bed at a decent hour. So the first item on our agenda is the Consent Agenda. Did anyone have anything that they would like to be removed from the Consent Agenda? Okay, seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the Consent Agenda.
No move?
Second. Okay.
On the motion to approve the Consent Agenda, Ms. Oden.
Yes.
Ms. Raymond.
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman.
Yes.
Ms. Mosher.
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver.
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Hohensie.
Yes.
Ms. Porter.
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Guarino. We have a few communications outside the Consent Agenda this evening. The first is regarding the May 13, 2019 Board of Education minutes. We had a non-public session during that particular meeting. This is an item that had been removed from the Consent Agenda in June and then placed back on the Consent Agenda. The minutes were approved, but then we, not we, we had our Secretary Jackie Waters edit those minutes to include an objection that Ms. Hohensie made regarding a discussion in non-public. And at this point, Ms. Hohensie would like the minutes to be amended again. Is that correct, Ms. Hohensie?
Yes, that's correct. Again, I want them amended to become port with a new law. The right-to-know law was changed, and it said that any objections that are made in non-public have to be posted in the public minutes. And it has to have the name of the person objecting, and it has to, the objections and the parts of the right-to-know law under which you went into non-public. So that's what I tried to do.
Okay. And everyone has the information regarding the discussions with our attorney and Ms. Waters about that? I will note, if you go to the minutes, that they include all of those, all of that information. But my understanding is Ms. Hohensie would like us to write the RSA that we went under, again, under where it says you objected.
No, I'll just read what I need to have put in there to comply with the law. During the non-public session, Mrs. Hohensie raised three objections to board discussions on the wording of a motion to be made in public in the non-public session which violated, i.e., was not in compliance with RSA 91A3, 2A, C, and I.
And as the minutes read currently, it states that Ms. Hohensie objected under the RSAs, and that's it? Doesn't...
Yes, because the law, which you've got posted in here on page 10, if the objection to the discussion in a non-public session, the objection shall be also recorded in the public minutes. But the notation in the public minutes shall include only the board member's name, a statement that he or she objected to the discussion in non-public, and they objected three times, and a reference to the provision of the RSA 93A:32 that was the basis for the discussion. In other words, the basis for going into non-public. And that night, we went into, under AC and I.
Okay. So at this point, the minutes that are currently posted have been vetted by our attorney and have been approved by the Board. So in order to change them again, we would need a motion to do, to do that.
I'll make a motion to include what I just read. It's on page 10. I could read it again. And this was vetted by the attorney, and he did say that I was correct, that what we have in there is not sufficient. It doesn't, because it doesn't have in compliance with whatever sections we went in under. That's what was missing, RSA 91A3, 2A, C, and I. So if you'd like, I'll read the motion, all the wording, or just say the wording that everyone has on page 10 of this handout.
I think that's sufficient, because Ms. Waters has it as well. So there's a motion by Ms. Hohensie to re-edit the minutes.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Van Twyver. Ms. Oden, you had your hand up.
Yes, if we've already amended them, why wasn't that in the first edition of the amendment? Why are we, why are we amending amended minutes?
So if you read in your packet, there's the whole thread with the advice from the attorney. So originally, Ms. Hohensie had advised us of the law. We said, let's have Mr. Clausen look it over. He said, yes, Ms. Hohensie is correct. He worked with Ms. Waters. They amended the minutes to comply with the law. He signed off on that. And then we all approved them. And then Ms. Hohensie has now come back again. This will be the third time that they would be changed.
Well, from what you said, I don't see any reason that they should be amended again. I will not support the motion.
May I say something?
Sure, Ms. Hohensie.
Because Mr. Clausen said that what we have in there doesn't comport with the law. This is new. Jackie was unfamiliar with it. She made an attempt at it. I pointed out that what was missing, the information, was factual information missing. And I gave him the corrected information, and the attorney said that that was correct. So it's a simple change. We're unfamiliar with this process, and it should be done correctly.
Well, I will advise everyone that in your packet, in the confidential section, is exactly what Mr. Clausen said. So, any other discussion on this matter? Or are we ready to take a vote? Seeing none, Mr. Guarino.
Can I say something?
Yes, Mr. Kaufman.
So this information was not communicated to me. So I have to assume that Mr. Mosher did not get it either. Why was this information not communicated to us when you knew prior to the meeting that we were both not going to be there?
Mr. Mosher got it in a confidential envelope. I'm not sure how you would have gotten it, but I would assume that since you asked her to email you everything, that it would be in your email packet.
I did not get a separate email. I only got what was, I downloaded from the website. I didn't know there was any confidential material. That was never communicated to me.
Okay.
Just for point of...
I have a comment.
Okay. Hold on one moment, Mr. Mosher. Dr. Mosley.
We emailed everything that was in the packet, and we also sent the packet to his house.
Okay.
Well, I specifically said, don't send it to my house.
Yep.
Number one. And number two, I'll have to go back and look at it. I did not, I didn't see that.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kaufman. So, well, it's both emailed. Okay. Mr. Mosher.
Yes, my comment is that I received the packet and that has been mentioned, and I read it thoroughly, even though some parts of it were a little confusing. But I understood, and I agree with it, and I'm ready for the vote.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mosher. All right. If you could call the roll, Mr. Guarino.
Okay. On the motion to amend the May 13 minutes again, Ms. Oden.
No.
Ms. Raymond.
No.
Mr. Kaufman.
Yes.
Mr. Mosher.
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver.
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes no. Ms. Hohensie.
Yes.
Ms. Porter.
No.
I have one, two, three, four noes and four yeses. The motion fails.
Okay. Thank you. The next item on our communications outside the Consent Agenda, if we could refer to our packet, the district has gotten, the Board has gotten, a third letter from the Freedom from Religion Foundation regarding our prayer, opening our meetings. They are asking us again to discontinue doing this. They sent, I think this is the third or the fourth, they sent at least one last year, I think perhaps two, and then now two this year. It seems that they're going to continue to send us letters every six months, which is perfectly acceptable. They can do that. And they're asking us to discontinue school prayer. I didn't think that I should unilaterally act on this letter or not act on the letter without bringing the matter to the Board. So if anyone would like to make a motion regarding opening our meetings with a prayer, I'm willing to entertain whatever people would like. Ms. Hohensie, then Mr. Guarino.
I'll make a motion that we continue with the prayer, and it's voluntary, and all those members who don't want to participate don't have to participate.
Second.
Second.
Okay. So to clarify, your motion is that we continue with the prayer and note that it is voluntary? Okay. Mr. Guarino.
Thank you, Madam President. I agree that we should tell the public that it's voluntary. Since I'm the person who is a clerk, and I get to lead the prayer every meeting, I don't want people in the audience to think that I'm some kind of religious leader or I'm not really qualified as a religious leader. But I do lead the prayer, and I don't want people to get the idea that they have to participate. It's a voluntary thing. So I agree with the motion. And I think that before I read the prayer, that I should note to the public that they don't have to in any way participate, and I don't want people to feel pressured that they have to participate. We have freedom of religion. You can or you cannot, and it's up, it's personal preference. So I agree with the motion.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Guarino. Ms. Oden.
Yes, I was president at the time we first received this, and I had asked for legal standing from a city attorney, and I guess we're still waiting for that. But I did look up this organization, and they had filed a lawsuit against the National Day of Prayer. That went to the Seventh Circuit Court of Appeals, and it was dismissed. The challenge was dismissed, holding that the Freedom from Religion Foundation did not have standing to challenge the National Day of Prayer statute or proclamation, and that only the president was injured enough to challenge the National Day of Prayer statute. They also, in January of 2013, after receiving a complaint from a resident, asked the City Council of Grand Rapids, South Dakota, to eliminate its practice of beginning each city council meeting with a Christian prayer. After the Freedom from Religion Foundation sent a second letter in February 2013, the mayor stated at that time that the prayers would continue. And that's all I basically could find out about them when I was researching them. In my opinion, I don't think we ought to be governed by some out-of-state organization that wants to control what we do. The aldermen start their meetings with a prayer. Our Congress, the Senate, they even have a clergy person there. So I don't, I don't know how successful they are, but I don't think they need to be telling us what we can and cannot do. I won't be voting to, I will be voting to support Ms. Hohensie's motion.
Okay.
Comment.
Yes, Mr. Mosher.
Yes, I have looked at this, and I find that the prayer is completely non-denominational. We do not offer any means of proselyzing. We do not enforce it in any other way. And in all of my experience on the Board, it has always been a voluntary matter. So I will support it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mosher. Any other comments? No? Excellent. Myself, I'm neutral on this. I find that it is, while it's non-denominational, it is Christian, normative, and our demographics are changing over time. And I think the nation's demographics are changing over time. A quarter of all people now are not associated with a religion. So times change. But at this time, I don't have any strong feelings either way. So if no one else has a comment, then I think we're ready for the roll.
On the motion to continue the prayer, but as voluntary, Ms. Oden.
Yes.
Ms. Raymond.
I'm going to abstain.
Mr. Kaufman.
Yes.
Ms. Mosher.
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver.
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Hohensie.
Yes.
Ms. Porter.
Yes.
I have seven yeses and one abstention. The motion carries.
Excellent. The next item is a letter that we received from the Senate of the state of New Hampshire. It is just allowing us, or notifying us, that the Senate budget delivers a significant amount of funding for next year, and the amount of 3.7 million. But it's my understanding that we still don't have an approved budget for the state, so it's kind of a moot point. But people are welcome to read that letter if they're interested. So now we move on to the question...
Can I say something?
Sure, Mr. Kaufman.
The letter is dated June 13. Why are we now only receiving it at the end of August?
I would suggest that it was not ready in, for the July meeting, and we had a pretty lengthy July meeting. So we didn't have a budget in July either, so I wasn't particularly concerned about it.
Well, the Board should be notified of the communication that it receives, particularly from a legislative body in a timely manner. I just want you to know, I'm very disappointed that this was not dealt with promptly.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kaufman. Okay, moving on. The next item is the public question comment period.
And I ask one thing be added to this list.
Certainly, Ms. Hohensie.
Last time, we had in our confidential packet the Civil Rights Commission on ELL.
Ah, yes.
We had a letter that should be posted in here so that it's accessible to the public, because it's not a confidential document.
That is correct. It is on the district website, associated with the minutes from our last meeting. And you're correct, we should make a public announcement about that. So the Department of Justice letter to the district regarding concern, regarding an investigation they are launching into ELL services in the district is on our website, associated with the minutes from our July meeting.
Thank you.
Anything further?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Okay. Public comments. I see that we have the public comment sheet down there. Thank you, Mr. Marku. Yeah. We can play the pass-it-down game. So at this time, I'm asking for public comments related to items on the agenda. So if you have something that is not on the agenda, I'm going to ask that you wait till the end. Mr. Marku.
Adam Marku. I live at Forge, Delorean Lane. I'm president of the Nashua Teachers Union. I sent two students off to school today. Happy New Year. I was able to stop at three schools today, and there were some very excited kids. There looked like there were a few anxious little ones, but I think all in all, there was a good tone in the schools I was at today. So I think everyone's happy to be back and, back in routine. I am here to speak in favor of the contract for Ask Me and Our Custodians. This journey seems like it started forever ago with no contract, outsourcing, an attempt to outsource, no outsourcing, back to negotiations, and finally, I think we're at the, the end of the road, and a contract hopefully gets ratified and moved forward tonight. As we said many times when this was at the forefront with the outsourcing, the teachers' union was never in favor of outsourcing. We stood strongly behind the custodians for a variety of reasons, including many that the men and women in that group, many of them have been in the district for a long time, in their schools, their kids go to this district, they're part of the school's community and family, and we wanted it that way. And we've all read the articles about the different outsourcing fiascos everywhere, and I'm glad, for whatever reason, that this district is moving forward with a contract with them, and that we can move on to the next chapter in whatever this may bring. So that's all I had for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marku. I also have Pam Jordan.
I'll pass.
You'll pass at this time? Okay. I'll come back to you at the next time. Although, I see that you have a student with you, and I hate to have you guys stay till the end of the meeting on a school night.
Well, she's, um, and there's questions here, and we're interested in the decision you're going to make about the marksmanship course. What is going to be done?
Okay. Yeah, just got to use the mic. So you're just here to observe at this time? Okay. Thank you. The next item is...
Excuse me.
Yes?
What did, what did the parents say? I couldn't understand.
Yeah, Mr. Kaufman, I just repeated it. She's here because she's interested in the marksmanship course, but she doesn't have a comment at this time.
Thank you.
But as she had a student with her, I wanted to give her the opportunity, assuming the Board agreed, to speak early if she wanted to, because it's a school night. Okay. Superintendent's comments. Dr. Mosley.
Thank you. All right. Well, first of all, I just wanted to say to the public that welcome back. We had our first day of school today for our elementary, our middle school, and our ninth graders. So I saw, I heard in the, in the audience that it's a ninth grader, so welcome to your first day. You know, everyone got homes, got to school safely and arrived home safely, so that's a nice thing. If I can kind of go back a little bit, because I know we've been a little bit on a, on a break from the summer, just want to give some people some updates on what happened in the summer for us. We had our admin retreat this past summer, and we had an opportunity to do some cultural competency with our group called Roots and Wings, and that was very helpful. Our attorney also gave us a professional development on how to conduct an investigation. We got some great feedback and some great resources for our administrators. We also had an opportunity, I know we keep talking about it, but we also talked about the strategic plan and how that was passed, how that's going to connect to our, our schools and our students, and that's very, been very, very exciting. We had our kickoff day for our teachers on Friday. It was a, it was a nice event. It happened, opportunity for us to talk about the strategic plan and moving forward as a district, focusing on the whole child and social-emotional learning. Just to mention a couple of things, in professional development. We also, if you haven't already done so, please go to our website and read the strategic plan. We also have a nice little video clip that sums it up in one minute and 32 seconds, which is really nice. I don't have too much to report right now. Have more to report as we start to progress into the summer, into the, we've transitioned from the summer months into the fall. But I just wanted to say a couple of things if you're new to the district. Please go on our Twitter, register there. That's the first place that you'll actually hear snow delays. I hate to use that word so early in the year, but that's the reality. We update that frequently, both the happenings in the district, and certainly, it would be helpful for you to be connected to that resource. Again, just reminding, we'll put this on the website and stuff, just recognize that for our, our winter break, we're going to have two weeks off, so please plan accordingly. And I'll leave with this. I hope everyone powers down tonight, even though you may go to bed at 7 o'clock, you probably won't fall asleep until 8 o'clock. But we are, we have about three days of school, and then you can take Friday off, give you Monday off, and then we're going to come right back, and we're going to be full steam ahead. So welcome back, and go Nashua.
Thank you, Dr. Mosley. I'm going to go around for Board response. Ms. Van Twyver's taking her no. Ms. Hohensie.
Yes, I have a question that I just wanted to pass on to the superintendent. I got a contact from a parent, and apparently, there's a law that says that they're doing a registry for autistic students. And this parent was very concerned because the law, well, she was afraid it was violating her privacy, because the regulations exceed what the law says. It's asking for a social security number, part of her name, part of things beyond what the law says. So I'm just hoping that you could look into that and make sure that the district only collects the information that we're supposed to collect by law.
I would encourage that parent to contact either myself or Marsha Bagley directly, and we'll certainly look into it.
Okay. And could they report back to me? I mean, can I find out what the upshot was so I can tell parents? Or do I have to tell everybody to go through? Not everybody wants to talk to central office. So I would appreciate it if I could get an update, too.
I'm not going to share information about another student with you, so again...
I don't want anything about students. I want generic information.
Okay. I'm going to, I'm going to limit this conversation, because it isn't at all related to the superintendent's comments. But noted that there is a question of if there is a law regarding autistic students' information.
I could send the information to the Board and the superintendent.
That would be fabulous.
After this meeting, to make it clear.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Kaufman, do you have a response to the superintendent's comments?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Guarino.
Thank you. Real brief, I just want to say welcome back to school, to our students and teachers and staff, looking forward to a productive year. And I'm sorry I missed kickoff day. I was on vacation. But next year, I won't be on vacation, so. Vacation, right.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Guarino. Mr. Mosher, do you have a response to the superintendent's comments?
Well, I was very happy to hear that the, the first day of school went off without a hitch, and that I think everybody's got their thinking caps on and looking forward to when is the next holiday.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher. Ms. Oden? Oh, Ms. Oden, did you have a response?
Yes, the next holiday is Monday, Mr. Mosher.
I thought so.
Ms. Porter?
No.
Okay. And I, I don't either, except to say welcome back to everybody. All right. Student member of the Board's comments. Ms. Scales, or did you want Mr. Ead to go first? Oh, you've been voluntold. I like that.
First on the list is senior pictures. The sooner the better. Get them done as soon as possible. The second on the list is freshman orientation was today. It went very well. The Bluefish and the Titan mentors who volunteered their time today did very well. I think it was a very successful day. And welcome back. Thank you, that's all.
Thank you, Ms. Scales. Mr. Ead.[1781.83]
Hello. Freshman orientation day was also at Nashville South today, and it was great to see all the upperclassmen also going in to help out with the transition for the new freshmen. Other than that, we're looking for forward to another good year in Nashville Public Schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ead. Okay. We don't have anyone for the committee on budget yet. We'll do that early next year. Committee on Finance and Operations, Ms. Oden, you guys have been busy. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Dr. Mosley?
When the time comes, if there is one item here on this finance and operations that I would just like to advise the board to just remove, because there's been some question from coming from special ed in terms of the funding source of that, and because Dan Donovan is attending is attending a family matter, I don't want the board to approve it until we get clarity on that, if I could do that.
So, are you suggesting that we take off all five of those contracts, or just one?
Nope. I'm just a suggestion, making the recommendation, the contract with Clearway and the Nashville Adult Learning Center, that one.
Okay. You would like that one to be taken?
Please.
Until next time.
Right. Just so I can get clarity on that from Dan Donovan.
The special ed one, okay, so...
The special education grant for amount of $46,548.80. That's that's the number in question.
Okay. Just the sped one?
Yes.
Okay.
So, excuse me, may I ask a question about that?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Kaufman.
Why can't we approve the previous item and and, you know, put the other one for the that involves the sped grant on hold where we could move forward on the other? Why do we need to hold them both back?
Yes, that's what Dr. Mosley is suggesting.
And I'm asking, why can't we do one? I can understand holding back one, but why can't we move forward with the other?
Yes, we will. Assuming, I don't know what information Ms. Oden has for us, but my assumption is is that she will move forward with all everything, except for that one item, until Mr. Donovan returns and can provide us a little bit more information.
Oh, thank you. I understood what I thought I heard was that both were being asked to be held back. Okay, I'm I'm sorry.
Okay.
Thank you.
Ms. Oden, I'm going to turn it over to you now.
Well, what we'll do, we'll act on each one separately, rather than because it said five, we'll go on four, so we will do them separately.
Thank you, Ms. Oden.
I recommend to approve the Boy Scout Eagle Project at New Surles Playground with the permission to use New Surles facilities on build day.
Second.
And I believe our Eagle Scout is here, and I have to say, I don't think I've ever seen such a complete and detailed list of the project. What an excellent job you did, and I think maybe when people are coming forward, we could hand them this to say, this is this is ideal if you want to put the work in. So, thank you.
I couldn't agree with more, Ms. Oden. Does anyone on the board have any questions for Mr. Lucy, since he is here?
Can I just make a brief comment?
Yes, Mr. Kaufman.
So, as a Eagle Scout myself, I'm sorry, I couldn't be there in person, but I just want to acknowledge your commitment to the community, and I'm sure you're going to do the work necessary to get this done with the utmost integrity, and I wish you the best. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kaufman. Was there any discussion on on this matter? Yes, Ms. Oden?
I just have one question to ask him. Did you say at the meeting that the principal or assistant principal was going to be there at your build day?
Can you come?
She said that? Okay.
Come up to the mic.
Yep, please come up to the microphone. Thank you, Mr. Lucy. Oh, Lucci, I'm saying it wrong. You can tell me when I get it wrong.
In answer to your question, Ms. Talbot did say that she would be attending that day.
Okay, I thought so. Thank you. Thank you so much for all your work and and what you're doing for the New Surles community. Thank you.
And if I recall correctly, Ms. Talbot expressed unwavering support for this.
She did.
So, this is wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
I believe we're ready for the roll, unless there's any other discussion?
I have a comment.
Okay, Mr. Mosher?
Yes, I'm very fascinated by what this young man has been doing, and like Mr. Kaufman said, that he was a scout. I also was a scout, and I remember my trustworthy, loyal, helpful, friendly, courteous kind, the the whole ritual. And, you know, having participated in scouting events like the Scoutaramas in Madison Square Garden back in the 40s, so yes, I think it's a marvelous thing that he's been doing. My congratulations to him.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher. Mr. Guarino?
Okay. On the motion to approve Boy Scout Eagle Project at New Surles Playground with permission to use New Surles facilities on build day, Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Hohensie?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero. Congratulations, Mr. Lucci.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lucci.
Congratulations.
Is it possible for us to have photos of the project when it's done? Yes, he's saying yes. Excellent, because I'm excited to see it. Okay, the next, oh, go ahead, Ms. Ms. Oden.
Okay. Motion to approve the New Surles Playground Improvements Funding to be Provided by the PTO.
Second.
And in your packet, you also see a picture of the the PTO playground, of which they're going to be working on, and although Mr. Lucci's project cannot be in the playground, it's close enough to the playground that teachers on recess duty can observe the students if they're overusing his his boards. So, it's not part of the playground, but project, but it is something that's accessible to the students that are on the playground, out to recess.
That's wonderful. It sounds like they'll complement each other. Lucky New Surles. All right, any other discussion? I see none, hearing none. Mr. Guarino?
On the motion to approve New Surles Playground Improvements Funded But To Be Provided By The PTO, Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Hohensie?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Motion to approve the creation of gardens at Led Street with Groh-Nashua Providing All Funding.
Second.
And not only is this a good project, but they are working with the senior citizen housing that is on the opposite side of central office. So, there will be cooperative work between the seniors in that housing development and the students and faculty at Led Street.
Okay. Can I just say, I think this is a wonderful, wonderful opportunity for our students at Led Street and the citizens in the neighborhood and at the assisted living facility. I just, I'm very excited about the idea of bringing people of multiple ages together to work on something tangible that's going to improve everybody's lives, so.
And and I guess I want to thank Nashville Lumber, who delivers the lumber that they will need, and I believe it's Ord Farm in Hollis for donating the plants that are going...
Doesn't matter.
I I thought it was Or- Mr. Ord.
Yes, Mr. Ord.
Yeah, and he's he has donated a lot, I think, all of the plants. So, it's just a very, a nice situation where people will be able to have some of that food, and if there's extra, you know, the kids take it home to their families. They they have a plan that if people are successful in growing a plot, they can ask for another plot. So, it's a positive for the school and for the neighborhood.
Okay. Any other discussion? Nope, hearing none. Mr. Guarino?
Okay. On the motion to approve the creation of gardens at Led Street with Groh-Nashua Providing All Funding, Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. De Mosher?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Hohensie?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Okay.
Move to approve the CTE Website Contract with Square Spot Design for $35,000 Charged to the CTE District Grant.
Second.
Okay. Ms. Bastoni is here, if she would like to speak to it. This is a company that did our brochure for the CTE program. Sure, come on down.
Hi, everybody. I just want to be clear that the funding is coming from a grant that we wrote to fund this project. It's not coming from any district funds. It's it's not coming from any accounts that will reduce anything to the students. We wrote a separate grant to fund this website.
Ms. Bastoni, to be clear, this is a website that will be shared between all of our CTE programs in the general area?
Yes. Mr. Kaufman reminds us that we are a regional CTE center, and regional meaning Hudson, Milford, and Nashua, and this website will promote the offerings at the entire region, and it will make it so much easier for us to have students come to Nashua, to travel to other centers, overlapping calendars. It's going to be highly functional.
Excellent. Ms. Van Twyver, I'm sorry.
Yes, I assume that this is going to be a separate website and not or not a link off of our district website?
Yes, it will be its own separate website. If we wanted to link from our website, you know, we could say, have a link from our website to that, but no, it'll be its own website.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Kaufman.
Was this put out for competitive bid?
Mr. Kaufman, this was not put out for bid, and I am happy to share those reasons with you. At the last board meeting, we discussed this. The reasons were this company helped design our brochure, and because we'd already done work with them, they had, it will cost us less in the end, because they have the content already created, so we just move it over to the website. Additionally, they work with Salem and Concord. We have photos we've purchased through them, so it's a significant cost savings to go with this company as well. We stayed within federal guidelines, which say you either have to put it to competitive bid or demonstrate that you'll have a significant cost savings by using the company that you're going with. So, we met all federal requirements and state requirements when we went with this company, but there were reasons we chose to go with them.
Well, the problem is you have a board requirement that says anything over 5,000, five or $10,000 needs to be put out for competitive bid. So, I would make the case that says you should have gone for competitive bid. There's no requirement you select the cheapest bid, the lowest bid, but I would argue that, and I think personally, I think $35,000 is a lot to develop a website, and I would like to know what other vendors would have charged before. So, I would vote, as much as I support CTE, I think you know that, Ms. Bastoni, I'll be voting against this for the simple fact that we didn't follow our own procedures and get competitive bids.
Mr. Kaufman, I totally appreciate what you're saying. As far as I can tell you, we did follow the requirements of the federal and state government, but I I do understand what you're saying. However, there were cost savings by choosing this company.
But what are they? How do you substantiate them without showing us a bid from another vendor?
Okay, thank you.
That's the point. It's not in black and white.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kaufman.
And that's what I'm looking for.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kaufman. You're coming across very loud. If you could just lower your speaking voice slightly. Thank you. Dr. Mosley?
Just a couple of things. First of all, thank you, Amanda, for the work you've done at CTE. I really appreciate it. And thank you for taking the time to write this grant and to put yourself out there. I really appreciate it. And to the CTE people out there who helped you with this, I appreciate the time and effort you've done. Just to clarify a couple of questions, did you work with Dan Donovan on this endeavor?
Yes, we worked very closely with Dan.
So, when Dan gets back, and we'd be more than happy to sit down and explain the cost savings, but I can assure you that you have my support and this administration's support in terms of going out there, being vulnerable, put yourself out there, and working within the grant and with Dan Donovan in a collaborative way to make sure that we follow the federal guidelines. So, when he returns, be more than happy to supply any board member who had any concerns about following the bid process. So, I really appreciate it, and thank you for being here tonight.
Okay, thank you. All right. Does anyone who hasn't made a comment have a comment? Okay, seeing none?
Ms. Raymond, given what Dr. Mosley just said, if I may, can we table this until the next board meeting, so we can get that information from Mr. Donovan?
Okay, so there's a motion, a motion from Mr. Kaufman to table this. Does anyone second that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Hohensie. Can we please have a vote on the motion to table? Mr. Guarino?
On the motion to table, Ms. Oden?
No.
Ms. Raymond?
No.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. De Mosher?
No.
Ms. Van Twyver?
No.
Mr. Guarino votes no. Ms. Hohensie?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
No.
I have six no's and two yeses. The motion fails to table.
Thank you. I think, yes, Ms. Hohensie?
Thank you. I, too, like Mr. Kaufman, think that this is a great project, and I'm concerned that this is a policy that we're violating, and we didn't vote to suspend the the rules before we set this up or anything. So, that's the only reason why I voted to table, to do this properly. I think many times, we trample our own policies and we set bad examples for why we even have them. So, unless we suspend the rules for this, I, too, will be voting against it, and thus are the reasons why.
Okay. All right, thank you, Ms. Hohensie. I do encourage members to read the minutes or watch the video from the Finance and Operations meeting. It might answer some questions. Mr. Guarino, if we could have the roll regarding the motion to approve?
Okay, on the motion to approve the CTE Website Contract with Square Spot Design for $35,000 Charged to the CTE District, Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
No.
Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Hohensie?
No.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
I have one. Six yeses, two no's. Motion carries.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bastoni. Don't go anywhere, I need you later. No. Thank you.
Dr. Mosley, would you like me to do four of the next five?
Yes, please. Thank you.
Motion to approve the contract with Youth Counsel for a Master Lead Student Assistant Program Counselor for $50,000 From Account 91.1.03/04116055699.
Second.
Any discussion on this? Okay, Mr. Guarino, when you're ready?
On the motion to approve four contracts.
We're doing each one separately.
Oh, you're doing each one separately?
Only the youth, only the first bullet.
Okay. On the motion to approve contract with Youth Counsel, Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Demosher?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Hohensie?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Motion to approve the contract with Clearway Nashua Adult Learning Center for $295,093 for an alternative high school program from account 91.1.99111053600.
Second.
Any discussion on this item?
May I make a comment?
Yes, Mr. Kaufman.
Thank you. So for the folks that may or may not know, the Clearway programs, we have two of them over there. They're very important to the district. If I'm not mistaken, this is about the same price as it was for previous years. So they've been able to provide an absolutely needed service and hold their pricing for which I just wanted to say, I personally am the most grateful, and I know the district is as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kaufman. Ms. Hohensie, would you mind adjusting the microphone slightly?
Turn it down a little bit.
Or turn it down? Mr. Kaufman, you're coming across so loudly that it's becoming difficult to understand you.
I was just speaking to the microphone I have here.
Okay, that's much better. Thank you, Ms. Hohensie. And thank you, Mr. Kaufman. Any other comments? No? Okay, go ahead, Mr. Guarino.
On the motion to approve the contract with Clearway for $295,093, Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Demosher?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Hohensie?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Move to approve the contract for three years with MSB Consulting Group for Medicaid Billing and Consulting Services, a 7% of revenue estimation of contract cost $150,000 per year, account 91.1.02233253628.
Second.
Any questions or comments on this item?
If I may, Ms. Raymond?
Yes, Mr. Kaufman.
Thank, again, just in case people don't know, why are we doing Medicaid billing? Well, we receive about $1.6 million a year in revenue to the district, and these folks doing our billing are the primary reason why we have that. So definitely support their work and also thank them for providing that revenue stream, optimizing that revenue stream for us. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kaufman. There's more information about this in the Finance Committee meeting minutes as well. So go ahead, Mr. Guarino.
On the motion to approve the contract for three years with MSB Consulting Group, Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Demosher?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Hohensie?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Motion to approve the contract with the youth council to provide a learning environment for suspended students in grades five through eight from account 91.1.99111053600.
Second.
Any comments or questions on this item? Okay, seeing none, go ahead, Mr. Guarino.
On the motion to approve the contract with youth council, Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Demosher?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Hohensie?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
That's it for the, that's enough of it.
Thank you very much, Ms. Oden. I was just looking to see if we had the date of the next meeting, and I don't, I don't know what I did with it. Oh, the next Finance and Operations Committee meeting is September 10th at 6:00 PM here in Nashua High School North. Committee on Policy is next, and that is you, Mr. Guarino.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to approve policy EB safety program as amended.
Second. Any discussion on this item? One moment, Ms. Hohensie, I wanted to see if Mr. Guarino wanted to speak to his motion.
Very briefly, Mr. Lassad has vetted this policy EB, and we discussed it twice in committee, I believe. And so people can look at the minutes to, or the videotape of the meeting for details.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Hohensie.
Thank you. I move to amend this policy, just to add three words. Right down at the end, it says, "And shall submit a written report to the superintendent annually." I'd like it to say, "Submit a written report to the superintendent and the board annually."
Second.
Okay, any discussion regarding Ms. Hohensie's amendment? Yes, Mr. Guarino?
We discussed this in committee, and the committee did not agree with it. So I don't know why we're bringing it up again because we discussed it at length, and it just delays things. But I'm not going to support that because that's not what, I mean, the committee members discussed it, and we liked it the way it was when we wrote it.
Thank you, Mr. Guarino. Any other discussion regarding the amendment? Ms. Hohensie?
Ms. Raymond?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Kaufman.
Yes, I was at that committee meeting, and I actually proposed it at the time. I think if we have people in every building developing a plan, and we're spending the time and effort and money, because we pay for that, and we have an assistant director of safety, I probably have the wrong title there, you know, aggregating and understanding the plan and taking the time to prepare a report for the superintendent, it should be given to the board. We are the oversight in the district. We spent $6 million last year, what, most of it grant money, but we paid 20%, improving safety at the schools. To suggest that the board should not be notified of a plan that's kept on file at the district office on an annual basis is ludicrous. So I support, I thank Ms. Hohensie for bringing this forward, and I support the language change. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kaufman. Ms. Hohensie?
I'll be brief. I don't think it allowed any time to send the report to the superintendent and the board. It could be sent confidentially if people are concerned if what it contains is confidential. And I think, again, as Mr. Kaufman said, it is our oversight duty. Those who don't want to read it don't have to be burdened by it. But I think it's good to provide that information to those board members that want to keep up on this.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Oden?
What we have done recently, especially this year, we've asked Mr. Lassad to come in and speak to us when there's changes to safety or improvements. So I don't think it's necessary. We can always invite him in for an update on any safety issues.
Thank you. Any other comments regarding this amendment? Okay.
So, Ms. Raymond?
Yes, Mr. Kaufman.
Given what Mrs. Oden just said, can we include that in the language of this paragraph? That in addition to the written report to the superintendent annually, perhaps the safety officer will come to the board and present the results just as, you know, as part of the policy? So there's accountability built in, which is what my concern is.
I'm going to suggest that if we want to continue wordsmithing this, that it ought to be sent back to policy as opposed to continuing to make amendments to it.
That would be okay, thank you.
So I'm not making a motion to that. Suggesting that if that's what you want to do, that that could be an option.
Well, you have a motion on the table anyway. You have to deal with that first.
Okay. All right. Ms. Van Twyver, did you have anything?
No.
No? Okay.
I could move the previous question.
I don't think it's necessary. I'll just ask Mr. Guarino.
Please do.
To call the roll.
Okay, on the amendment to add on the last sentence, that a written report to the superintendent annually and the board.
It would be the superintendent and the board annually, keeping the notes.
That's what I said.
No, but it, you wrote down in between superintendent and annually. Got it.
On the amendment, Ms. Oden?
No.
Ms. Raymond?
No.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Demosher?
No.
Ms. Van Twyver?
No.
Mr. Guarino votes no. Ms. Hohensie?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
No.
I have two yeses and six noes. The amendment fails.
Okay. On the original motion, which was to approve it as it was presented to this board?
Okay, on the motion to approve policy EB safety program as presented, Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
No.
Ms. Demosher?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Hohensie?
No.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Motion carries six to two.
Thank you, Mr. Guarino.
Okay. Next on the agenda is policy JJJA, Student Extracurricular Activity Eligibility Academic Expectations. I move to approve policy JJJA, Student Extracurricular Activity Eligibility Academic Expectations as amended.
Second.
The changes are on page three, and I believe they were made in order to conform to regulations or, Ms., I'm sorry, Ms. Fitzpatrick, you can correct me on that.
Ms. Jengris met with the middle school principals, and what's been taken out of here is the program that we no longer have for students to academically become eligible for sports. So the language was changed to coincide with what's currently happening.
Thank you.
Okay. Any discussion or questions on this policy? Okay, hearing none. Go ahead, Mr. Guarino.
On the motion to approve policy JJJA, Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Demosher?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Hohensie?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero. Okay, also associated with JJJA is JJJA-R. I move to approve policy JJJA-R, Student Extracurricular Activity Eligibility. I recall, there are changes that are on page?
Second.
One and two?
Thank you, Ms. Van Twyver.
Okay.
Okay, any other discussion? Oh, yes, Ms. Fitzpatrick?
I just, excuse me, Ms. Jengris really wanted me to note that there's no changes to the high school sections of this policy, only middle school.
Okay. Okay, any other comments or questions? Seeing none, go right ahead, Mr. Guarino.
On the motion to approve policy JJJA-R, Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Demosher?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Hohensie?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero. We also have JJJB, Student Extracurricular Activity Eligibility as amended, with some pages, with some changes, again.
So, I'm sorry, just to clarify, you are making a motion to approve JJJB as amended?
Yes, I'm going to move to approve JJJB as amended.
Okay.
Second.
Second, and by Ms. Van Twyver again, thank you. Did you wish to speak to your motion, Mr. Guarino?
Yeah, I just, we did discuss this in committee. Again, this is middle school, changes to the middle school.
Okay. Regarding suspensions and other behavioral issues?
Yes.
Okay. Any commentary or questions on JJJB? Seeing none, go ahead, Mr. Guarino.
Okay. Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Demosher? Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Hohensie?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero. So I believe that brings us to the, there is another policy here that's in the packet, but I think that's Human Resources. Okay?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so our next meeting for policy is going to be September 5th at 6:00 PM, right here in this boardroom.
All right. Oh, that's next week already. My goodness, time is flying. Okay. Committee on Curriculum and Evaluation, Ms. Porter?
We will be meeting on September 9th at 5:30.
Okay. Thank you very much, Ms. Porter. And then I believe, Ms. Porter, that you are presenting Human Resources this evening?
Correct. So the first thing on the agenda is to recommend approval of policy GBJ Personnel Files. So I move to recommend that approval.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay, and I'll have Ms. Guerra speak to that.
This is an update to exclude personally identifiable information in addition to the medical and benefit paperwork. PII includes things like social security number, passport numbers, place of birth, mother's maiden name. Those are all information when put together can lead to, it's information that hackers get, and they have their information all together.
Okay. Okay, Ms. Hohensie?
Thank you. I think all those changes are great. I have no objection to what's on the paper, and I suggest we pass this tonight, but I also recommend that this goes back to committee. You're missing the Director of Social Emotional Learning, the new one that you created. Wouldn't they be listed here?
I don't believe we've actually, I believe that that's a part of the strategic planning process, that that is a plan to create that position, but it hasn't been created in this year's budget.
Okay.
Unless I'm incorrect.
No, you're right.
So I would suggest then that if we do vote to create that position next year in the budgeting process, then at that time it should be updated.
Okay, that's all I'm pointing out.
Is that reasonable?
Oh, yeah, no, I think it should pass tonight as is. But I'm just pointing out that there was, that one was missing. I don't know if there's anybody else that's missing. Maybe we ought to double check.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Hohensie. Any other commentary?
There is nobody else that's missing. And that position, if it was included, that, if they were supervising people and have There is nobody else that's missing, and that position, if it was included, that if they were supervising people and have needed access to records, typically, the staff at the schools are supervised by the principals, so...
Okay, so it sounds like a discussion to be had as we move forward with budgeting next year, and talking about if we are able to add positions, which I certainly hope we continue to grow. Okay.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes, Mr. Kaufman?
I don't believe I see, I'm going to use his name because I'm not a Director of Special Services, Mr. Chopra, his position I don't believe is on here.
So, Mr. Chopra?
Would he be included? He's not a director.
Mr. Chopra supervises student services, and this is employee personnel files.
So, Mr. Chopra is not?
No. He does work with the nurses, but the principals are the ones that evaluate them and discipline them. Okay.
Okay.
And in case of the ELL teachers, they're also rated by the principals, so they would not apply here?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kaufman. Okay. Mr. Guarino?
On the motion to approve policy GBJ Personnel Files, Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman? Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Mosher?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Hohensie?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Okay, I move to rescind policy 8100 dot 1 Personnel Files.
Second.
Bless you. Did you wish to speak to your motion, Ms. Porter?
Well, it's just we're replacing with the new one.
Great. Okay. If there's any discussion, seeing none, go ahead, Mr. Guarino.
On the motion to rescind 8100 point 1, Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Mosher?
Yeah.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Hohensie?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Okay. So, can we move to suspend the rules to vote on the personnel recommendations from the HR Committee meeting earlier this evening?
Seconded by Ms. Oden.
Okay.
On the motion to suspend the rules, Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Hohensie?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Okay. I move to accept the personnel recommendations revised dated August 26, 2019.
Second.
Good. Any discussion? Hearing none. Go ahead, Mr. Guarino.
On the motion to approve personnel recommendations, Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Mosher?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Hohensie?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. Ms. O'Gara, before we move on, I see that the next meeting for HR is not until the 18th. Do you have a need to have one in the meantime that you're aware of at this time?
Is that, isn't there a special BOE before that?
Oh, I see. You're correct. There is a special Board of Ed on Monday.
Yes.
Never, Tuesday.
Monday's a holiday.
Yep, Tuesday, Tuesday, September 3rd. So, I take it back. We have one on Tuesday. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Go ahead, Ms. Van Twyver.
I'd like the record to show that I was not aware that Ms. Timmons would not be here tonight, so I did not fill in as alternate.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Van Twyver. I believe Ms. Timmons decided a few moments before that she wouldn't be able to be called in. She had surgery.
I thought she had surgery.
She did. We were trying to get her on the phone, but, okay. Anything else, Ms. Porter?
No, that's all. Thank you.
Okay. So, moving along, the next item is liaison reports. As far as the Joint Special School Building Committee, at this time, there is no update. Our August meeting was canceled due to the unavailability of some reports yet. At this time, the JSSBC is moving right along with the evaluation and data gathering period of the middle schools project. There's a lot of data that they are currently gathering, from geo survey reports, to structural reports, to all sorts of engineering, and I don't, I'm not a technical, like, building person, so I don't know all of the terms, but I believe there's at least four or five reports out there that we're waiting, and as soon as they're completed, they will be given and presented at, hopefully, the September meeting. And then, once the committee gets all of that information, then the committee can discuss what to do next as far as moving forward. Do we need more data? Are we ready to decide on what projects to take on? So, we're still in an information gathering phase. Ms. Fitzpatrick, did I miss anything?
One of the reports we're waiting on, it's a transporta, the traffic report, because of the concerns at Penachuk.
Okay.
So, that's one of the reports we're waiting for.
Okay, thank you. So, the concerns Ms. Fitzpatrick is referring to are that cars tend to go very quickly over by Penachuk, even though there's a four-way stop there and signals, people tend to gun it when they get their green light, and it's creating a safety concern for our students who need to cross the road there. So, the Joint Special has asked that as the middle school projects move forward, that they do a traffic analysis of all of the schools and the proposed site to figure out what's going on. Go ahead, Ms. Van Twyver.
Doesn't Penachuk have a bridge that goes across the, a walking bridge that goes across the street?
They do for the old Route 3 there, but Manchester Street, which turns into Tinker, I think, does not, that just has a crosswalk. And so, and that tends to be where Manchester Street turns into Tinker, tends to be where people are, they're going so fast, and I don't understand how you can go that fast from a dead stop. But, you know, clearly, I'm not a fast driver in general, so, and we're having some issues with people failing to stop for the crosswalk, which obviously is not allowed, but we can't have a police officer there every single day. So, go ahead, Ms. Fitzpatrick.
And I just wanted people to know that there was a crossing guard there this morning.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Fitzpatrick. Go ahead, Ms. Hohensie.
Well, there was construction there, the repaving, so that whole area is a mess today and tomorrow, so hopefully, it'll get better by Wednesday. I just want to know when they get all these reports and they make their recommendation, that recommendation will come back to the board to make a decision.
No, the Joint School, Joint Special School Building Committee, whoo, I always get it wrong, is actually a higher governing body than the Board of Ed. So, it's half Alderman and half Board of Ed, so they make the decision together. It does not then necessarily come back to the board. The Building and Construction Committee, that would come back to the board, but my understanding is that the JSSBC does not necessarily come back to the board unless they need board action on something, like the naming of a school, the question whether redistricting would happen, those kinds of things. Go ahead, Ms. Hohensie.
Thank you. On June 25th, 2018, which is like 14, 15 months ago, Mr. Guarino moved, seconded by Mrs. Timmons, to approve the administrative proposal to move the school construction process to JSSBC for review, refinement, and evaluation. It doesn't say that we gave him permission to make a decision. My understanding was it comes back with a report, the review, refinement, and evaluation. That doesn't seem, that means, it seems to me like a recommendation, then the board discusses it as a unit, and hopefully, we have a public hearing to let the public in on that, and then go whatever approval process that needs to go back through the Alderman.
Interesting. My understanding of the governing structure was that the JSSBC would be the one holding the public hearings. So, this is something that I will research, and I will get back to the board.
Okay, and what was the history, and Mrs. Van Twyver might know, when we have other projects, did they come back to the board for final approval?
Yes.
No.
Mr. Mosher saying no. Mr. Mosher, is that correct?
No, I was thinking about the JSSBC, and that is the governing body at, in this particular case, and because it's joint with Alderman, Mayor, and the Board of Education. So, we have, you know, just a system where we get updated on the progress and what is being done and how it's being done, and the ability to make comments, for, give an example, of the routing of the loading and unloading of the buses, or the parents that drive up. There we have some to say about the routing of that and what is going to be done, like, one of the other schools there where we had talked about the, you know, the shelter on the second floor of the building, you know, had the overhang and the railings and the et cetera. Otherwise, we don't have very much to say about it except to approve or make a recommendation or suggestion as to what might be good and proper. Otherwise, the, it's a joint situation where if there's going to be a public hearing, the Alderman and the committee will determine that and the time and the place.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher. Mr. Guarino?
Thank you, Madam President. That motion had to do with new construction in the middle school, whereas we're talking about Penachuk issues. So, I don't see how that motion is connected to the issue of Penachuk and the traffic, and jurisdiction is actually on the street, and that would, you know, I think it's a town-owned, it's a city-owned street, and so, but, so there's a lot of different, you know, it's kind of a complex thing.
Thank you.
In the case of Penachuk, that would have to be something that go before the Alderman, where they would have to approve any change in the traffic flow or the control of the traffic on those streets.
Yes, regarding the Penachuk traffic situation, we need to, we need to continue to have discussions with the city. Regarding the JSSBC and governance and authority, I will find out, and I will get back to everyone.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes. Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. So, the middle school, the middle school project started out as an Elm Street project, and then it expanded itself to include Penachuk, and that's what that committee is doing. It's all-inclusive as part of the middle school project. It is therefore within the purview of us, of the board. We have four, if I'm not mistaken, we have four board members on the JSF. That does not constitute a majority of the board. They cannot make decisions representing the Board of Ed. They're there as a minority and therefore have to report back to the board for the final decision. So, I, I'm glad to hear, Ms. Raymond, that you're going to look into it, but I, 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 I'm looking forward to hearing the legal opinion. Who are you going to go to for the authority on this?
I figured I would ask Corporation Council and also Mr. Clausen, because I might as well get two opinions.
You might get a former president's opinion too. Mr. Halliwell, I'm sure can chime in.
Yes, I'm certain the former presidents have some historical knowledge, so I'm happy to reach out. Ms. Oden, you had your hand up?
Yes. There was a time when nine members of the Board of Education and nine members of the Board of Alderman made up the Joint Special. My understanding, if I remember correctly, they were having a hard time getting a quorum in a lot of the meetings. So, what they decided to do is to have five members from the Board of Education, a majority, and five members from the Board of Alderman make up the Joint Special. I have to say, I don't remember the Board of Education having anything really to do with the Broad Street renovation or the Sunset Heights renovation. That all went through Joint Special, so, from my memory. So, I, I, I think Mr. Dowd would be the one who could give you some information about that also, having been on the board and now being Chair of Joint Special.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Oden. Okay, so, that opened up quite a bit more than I expected on my, there was no update on the JSSBC. But I think, I think what has been said is helpful. Moving on to unfinished business. The next item on our agenda is the JROTC Marksmanship Course, and I see that Dr. Bastoni is here, as well as Sergeant Ellis. If y'all would like to come down and give us an update on what you've been working on this summer, I would really appreciate it.
Hello again. First, I want to say thank you to everyone who appropriately and thoughtfully shared their opinions, comments, and insights regarding marksmanship. I am especially proud of the students of Nashua who demonstrated to the entire state what that healthy discourse is still alive, and through this process, I think, exemplified the democratic process. Therefore, it is my pleasure to announce it worked. Thanks to the support of Ray Smith, President of Horse Pond Club, we have been invited to host our marksmanship club at their facility at no cost. Horse Pond, in fact, met as a club and voted to waive all fees. They did this because they want to show their support of our schools and our students. To reiterate, we can now run marksmanship at Horse Pond and transport our students there and back at no additional cost to the district. I want to share with the Board of Education, the Nashua Public School District, and the Nashua Public that Sergeant Ellis and I have been in regular communication regarding this issue, and we are of a like mind in recommending that the Board of Education approve the JROTC Marksmanship Program to be held at Horse Pond. Finally, I want to close by saying I am so proud to work with Sergeant Ellis and the JROTC students. Some of you may know, and some of you may not, that Major Newton and his wife, who is also a teacher in our district, were relocated to Nebraska. Despite this, however, Sergeant Ellis has been growing and thriving the JROTC program. We are, like many schools across the country, moving JROTC under CTE, and we are excited to announce that for the first time in the history of Nashua's JROTC program, we will be participating in drill competitions and academic bowls.
Ooh, that's exciting. Thank you. I have a question. Sergeant Ellis, with this partnership with the Horse Pond Club, and giant thank you to them, will they include storage of the marksmanship rifles as well?
So, prior to Major Newton leaving, he and I and Ray Smith had a meeting, and Donna Fitzpatrick, and Sergeant Ellis was still teaching at that time. So, I'm going to take this question, but it's not because he isn't highly aware of what's happening. They cannot store the equipment there. However, we can create policies and procedures that will completely and safely store the materials here, and that's done at many schools across the state of New Hampshire. And we have also spoken to Transportation about how we can move the materials back and forth as well. We've also spoken to the Nashua Insurance, and they can insure the program. So, there's really nothing holding us back from moving the marksmanship program to Horse Pond. I'd like to reiterate that we want to do it thoughtfully. We're not going to jump into this and do it tomorrow. I don't think you would want that either. So, we just want to do it thoughtfully and correctly, but it's happening, and we've been working very closely together on this.
Ms. Van Twyver, then, Mr. Guarino?
Is it going to happen this semester, or are you thinking the next one?
Probably, I would say, not this semester, only because we only have one teacher right now, so it would be a lot to ask, I think, for Sergeant Ellis to start up this program and teach all of the classes. So, until we can get another individual in the classroom, I'd like to not put that pressure on Sergeant Ellis, but, you know, we plan to do it as soon as possible.
And why, and when are we in the process now of finding somebody to help him out?
Yes, I hope that we can...
I mean, assume it's on the JROTC side that the decision's come.
They send us qualified candidates, and then we're able to pick from those, but I do want to reiterate that Sergeant Ellis is doing a fantastic job.
Not concerned about that, ma'am. I just want to know when we're going to find a substitute person.
As soon as possible, and in fact, no students have been displaced.
Mr. Guarino?
Thank you, Madam President. I want to thank Dr. Bastoni and Sergeant Ellis. Thank you very much for all your hard work. And I move to approve the JROTC Marksmanship Program at the Horse Pond Club. And I took marksmanship when I was young, so I know the merits of marksmanship. It's a great program, although it wasn't JROTC, but...
I second it.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Van Twyver. Please wait for a second before you speak to your motion.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Okay, so...
I'm done. Okay.
Are you, okay. Okay. And Ms. Porter?
Okay, thank you again. I'm really happy to hear that this is going over at Horse Pond, and thank you to the people and to all of your efforts to do that. This is really great. My question is about the storage and transportation. Is that going to require more pa- to require more policy at the board level? How is, I'm, I'm just not understanding exactly how that's going to play.
I don't think it will require board policy. We already have procedures in place right now to, um, make sure that any perceived weapons, um, guns or materials would be, uh, moved in very thoughtful ways and safely for all students who are involved. We've already created that, uh, protocol, working with the principal at the school, Nate Burns. So, um, I can't answer exactly how we'll transport it. I could come back to the board with that answer and I'd be happy to do that, but, um, I know it will be in a very thoughtful way.
Okay. I would be interested in hearing the, how that's been worked out. I would, I would love if you would come back and fill us in.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Maybe not to every meeting, but...
No, 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 no. And at the end of it too. Right. Thank you.
Ms. Hohensie?
Oh, thank you. I'm very glad that you're getting it rolling. And students from South are eligible to participate too?
They are, absolutely.
That's great. I'm, I'm glad that it's, it's working.
And actually, when we become, when we bring JROTC into COT, uh, our, CTE, we will be able to have Hollis and, uh, Milford students, if they participate as well, they could be part of marksmanship.
Wow, terrific.
Great.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, Mr. Kaufman.
Thank you. So, Ms., uh, Dr. Bastoni, so since we're regional CTE and this is now, uh, the marksmanship program is gonna be under the auspices of CTE, does that enable the program to grow through, through students from other areas because of its affiliation with CTE? Or must it be a specific school district that the students need to be members of?
Mr. Kaufman, you are absolutely correct. When JROTC officially becomes a CTE program, it will be open to any students in our region. And in fact, we have had inquiries in the past. Students from other schools have wanted to participate in our region, um, but the cost has prevented them from participating. Uh, now that cost will be eliminated and, um, they can attend.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Bastoni.
So, I just want to comment, that's a huge advantage for the program because we were several students short. So, this will ensure the program's continuation because we'll have a much larger pool of students. And after this vote, um, Madam Chair, I have a comment I'd like to make and a motion regarding something related to this.
Regarding JROTC?
Yes.
Okay. There is a motion on the floor, so he's asking for, when we complete this motion, to be recognized to have the floor, since he can't wave his arms at me. I think that's reasonable. Okay, Mr. Mosher, did you have a comment?
No, I have none. I'm just grateful that we finally gained this thing worked out.
Okay. So, I, I do still have a lingering question about storage. Um, and I'm, I'm not concerned because I think we have a terrific group of, um, people, staff and students here at North. Um, but I am, um, invested in the idea that these should be locked up during the day, um, someplace where students wouldn't be able to access if, say, especially with Sergeant Ellis, you having such a full, um, it's not case load, classroom load that you're holding on to right now, doing pretty much two people's work all by yourself. Um, what is the plan for making sure that while you're not able to physically be where they're stored because of your job requirements, that, that other students won't be able to access them?
I, I want to say one thing and then I am gonna turn it over to Sergeant Ellis. We, um, don't currently even own the guns that we would use to do this. So, we still do need to figure out a way to purchase those. Hopefully, we'll write a grant, which you'll approve. And then, um, we can get that whole process running. So, I just want to say, if you approve it, we can continue forward. Um, and now, when we do have them, Sergeant Ellis, how would we store them?
Okay, so... They will be, uh, stored in the back of the classroom. There's actually a storage facility. Uh, it's mandated that it has to have that in the classroom. So, it'll never be, I'll never be away from it.
Okay.
So, I'll always be within walking distance of, uh, the facility. And each rifle, air rifle will be, uh, locked up in a, uh, storage container. So, that will be locked as well. And then each rifle will also be, uh, will be locked itself and have a clear, called CBI, Clear Barrel Indicator, to indicate that it's locked and to show that it's not, uh, it has nothing inside of it, i.e. a pellet. So, we're talking four times over on safety precautions, where myself will only have the key and Dr. Bastoni. And we can give that to any other administrator in the school, such as the principal, things like that.
Okay. Thank you. I feel, I, I feel good about that plan. So, thank you.
So, when we transport them, just to, we have a plan in place where everybody's notified for administrators. It will be done at the end of the day where students are not around because I want to take that fear out of any, any student's, you know, mindset. That's, that's very important to me. So, that's what we'll be doing to make sure that we try to limit the interaction of that around students.
Okay, thank you. And my concern too is about misunderstandings. You know, I don't want any of the JROTC kids to be placed in a position where they're in danger because somebody else is, you know, having a misperception of what's going on. So, uh, Ms. Porter?
Okay, just so I understand, so you will be coming back to the board at some point and really detailing the procedure whereby those are transported to Horse Pond and back? Because I assume that it's gonna have to happen every time. Somebody's gonna have to take them there and bring them back and we will be fully apprised of that procedure.
You're correct, yes.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you. And I, I think most of us on the board would like to know when you're ready to go, um, because there's wide support for the students to be able to have this program. So, I, I, I think I can speak for almost all nine of us to say that we would like to know, um, you know, when you're ready. So...
And initially, I think we have worked it out where we can borrow these pellet guns from, Manchester has a JROTC, yeah, marksmanship program. So, they are willing to loan us, um, some of these, uh, pellet guns. Um, so we will be borrowing them so that we can get it started. But we do need, I guess we are asking and we would appreciate you to approve us to move the marksmanship, start the marksmanship program and then move it to Horse Pond. And then we can return to you with any information that you've asked for about how we will be doing that.
Okay, that's wonderful. And isn't, um, Manchester the Marines?
Navy.
They're Navy. Look at that, inter-agency cooperation.
Absolutely.
All right. Um, so we have a motion on the floor by Mr. Guarino?
Ms. Raymond?
Yes, Mr. Kaufman?
I, I just need to follow up on something Ms., uh, Dr. Bastoni said. She said she needed to write a grant to perhaps get funding to purchase the equipment. With my understanding, the original proposal was that the Air Force was going to supply all funding relating the material and equipment. Has that changed?
Ms. Bastoni misspoke. Doctor?
So, to answer your question, sir, the, uh, yes, the Air Force can and the civilian marksmanship program provides grants, uh, as well to the Air Force. So, the Air Force will still continue to pay for all of these. And, uh, so that way it'll be no cost to district and Dr. Bastoni doesn't have to write any grants.
Okay.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
All right, thank you. Okay. Mr. Guarino?
On the motion to approve JROTC Marksmanship Program at Horse Pond Club, Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Hohensie?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Okay. Mr. Kaufman, you said you had an item related to this?
Yes, thank you. I, I move that the board issue a, uh, a, I, I propose that we thank the Horse Pond, uh, members and executive team for hosting, uh, our marksmanship program and, and just a letter of support thanking them in that regard.
Second.
The Board of Ed.
Okay. So, that would be a resolution of gratitude or something, yes?
Yes, that's my intent. I'm sorry I don't have the best wording for you. It just came to me.
That's okay. Um, I, I think that there's support on the board for that. Is that something that we require a vote for? Yeah, let's do it.
Well, if, are you asking me that question?
No, I'm just, it's a rhetorical question. Let's, let's do it.
Okay, passes by.
Is there a second? I didn't hear.
Yes, you have a second.
I second it.
Okay. So, on the question of having the board, I assume me draft a letter of thanks to the Horse Pond, um, Club and Mr. Smith.
Okay, on the motion, uh, Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino vote, Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Hohensie?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Okay.
Heather, could we recommend that maybe the JROTC students could sign the letter or something, you know?
Yes.
Yes.
That would be great. Nice. So, when I, I will draft something and I will probably send it to, um, Tara and then have her and Dr. Mosley and then have them do what they do. And then, we can go from there.
Excellent.
Okay. Thank you so much, Dr. Bastoni and Sergeant Ellis, for staying so late on the first day of school. I sincerely appreciate it. Okay. Um, so, the next item on our agenda under unfinished business is the APSME Collective Bargaining Agreement, um, for which I have scheduled a non-public session. Um, and I, um, I, I guess my question to the board is, um, do we require a non-public session? Um, is there anyone who, um, feels that they would like a non-public session to, uh, have any remaining questions or conversation regarding this contract before we motion on it? Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Okay. So, in that case, I would like a motion to go into non-public under, oh, I move that we go into non-public under RSA 91A32E, which is, uh, oh, no, I think it's A. No. I think it's E, negotiations. Yes? Okay, seconded by Ms. Oden.
On the motion to, uh, go into non-public, Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
No.
Uh, Mr. Mosher?
No.
Uh, Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Hohensie?
No.
Uh, Ms. Porter?
Yes.
I have one, two, three, four, five yeses and three noes.
Okay. So, five to three, that's sufficient for us to go into non-public?
Yes.
Okay. So, I'm just gonna pause for a second to reset the recording and give everybody a chance to get out. All right, we're back in public session. I'm looking for a motion to seal the minutes.
So, move.
I'll, I'll second.
Okay, fantastic.
On the, uh, motion to seal the public minutes?
Non-public.
Non-public minutes at 9:02 PM. Uh, Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
No.
Uh, Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Uh, Ms. Hohensie?
No.
Uh, Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Motion carries six to two.
Okay. Um, hello, we're back in public session. I move to approve the Factfinders' recommendations on a collective bargaining agreement with the Nashua School District Custodian Union.
I'll second. Oh, Mr. Mosher's second, okay.
Okay. Do we have any discussion? Yes, Ms. Oden?
I would like to speak to it. Um, I was one of the individual board members who voted to, uh, look into privatizing. And, uh, when the information came back from everything, um, it was obvious that from speaking to people and listening to people at the meetings, that was not the way to go. And I still believe that privatizing is not anything that we should be looking at. I am not going to support the contract and I, I want to tell you why. I am very much bothered by the fact that, um, this young boy who came tonight, this Eagle Scout, has a project at New Searls. He is going to have to pay, out of the money he has raised, a hundred dollars to a custodian to come and open the door and, and let the people in and whatever. These people, uh, there's going, going to be 24, 25 people, he said. These people are volunteering their time. They're students, community members, teachers. The, uh, principal has said she would be willing to be there. She's going to be there and open the door for people. As a, a teacher, when I was at Imherst Street, we were working on the garden inside. Not only did we have to pay for custodial, uh, people there, we had to pay somebody from, um, the grounds department. They, we, we could charge double. And I think when we're working as a community, as a school district, I don't think it's fair to take advantage. I think that's taking advantage of people when you can have somebody volunteer to do something and somebody is going to come in at, uh, from what I was told, approximately it was gonna cost a hundred dollars. So, that in itself, uh, to me, is something that I don't think is, is right and I cannot vote for the contract because of that.
Thank you, Ms. Oden. Any other comments or discussion? Ms. Hohensie?
Thank you. I too was on, on the negotiations for the first round. Um, I wasn't here for privisation. I think it's been a long and arduous path. I'm gonna support it and I really hope that the next contract round goes smoother and faster. Um, because this, this took far too long. Uh, and I know there's disagreements on both sides with the, the arbitration, but it's a settlement and we can move forward and hopefully we can work better together the next go-round.
Thank you. Ms. Van Twyver?
I'm next.
Oh, okay. Actually, Ms. Van Twyver's been waiting and then you, Mr. Mosher, okay?
Oh, uh, Ms. Van Twyver's been waiting. Let her go first then.
Thank you.
Um, there's no reason why the union couldn't, uh, waive it for that one group if they so desire. Could, I mean, couldn't they? I mean, if they was out of the goodness of their heart, uh, and, uh, waive the charge?
I, I don't know that the contract will allow that. So...
I guess we should have asked the lawyer when he was here.
I, Mr. Mosher?
Yes, thank you. Now, uh, you know, being in the corporate, uh, structure of the company that I was formerly employed for, um, when you have a union, things are not always, uh, what you think is fair. You have to look at from the standpoint of what, what is fair for you or the company and the union. And the union is gonna stick up for themselves. And that being what it is, that's what it is. And sometimes you get a lump, sometimes you don't. You know, like they say, sometimes you feel like a nut, sometimes you don't. Well, this is the same kind of thing. And the union is there to protect themselves and the, and their workers. And, uh, this is the way it works. They, they are gonna have somebody come in and, you know, sometimes it's just unlocked. I found myself other times where I just had to sit on a chair and wait for somebody else to come by and, and try to screw. And, uh, that wasn't fair either, but that was, uh, the, the rule. That was what you had to do. And the same thing out in the field, you know, you got something that belongs to a carman and, um, something that belongs to the electrician, one other thing that belongs to the machinist. That's the way it works. That's what it is and that's the way it works. You can't get around it because that's what the contract says and you do that. And if you negate one part of the contract, you negate the whole thing.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mosher. Um, seeing no other hands up?
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes, Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. So, I've been on the board four years now and this issue has been open that entire time and preceded my arrival. So, I'm kinda pleased to see that, uh, an agreement has been reached. Uh, I will support and vote for the contract. But I do want to explain a reservation that I have, which it really has nothing to do with the contract, but rather the way it was presented to the board. And tonight, minutes, a minute before the board meeting, we received what's called the costing sheet. we received what's called the costing sheet. This should've been provided to us a couple of weeks ago when we had a more detailed briefing on the contract. It was unavailable. It was supposed to, I thought it was gonna be sent to us promptly and instead it was handed to us tonight, immediately before. And our ability to query the author of that is Mr. Donovan, who's out on a personnel, on a personal matter. And the board, by its own policies, requires three-day essentially notice on anything that's coming before the board so we can review it and be prepared and ask questions at the time. So, I just want to point out, because this is something this administration does all too frequently, is withhold information to the last minute. Tonight with this contract with the costing sheet was just another example. We had correspondence that was sent to us in June, we only got tonight. I'll stop, I'll vote for the contract, but I'm trying to advise the administration to treat the board according to policy and provide information on a timely basis as required. And the failure to do so, to me, is, is deplorable. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Kaufman. That being said, I think we're ready for the roll.
On the motion to approve the Factfinders' recommendations on a collective bargaining agreement with the custodian, custodian union. Ms. Oden?
No.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Hoensie?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
I have one no and seven yeses. The motion carries seven to one.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes, Mr. Kaufman.
Thank you. I have another issue under unfinished business.
Yes, Mr. Kaufman.
What is the status of the student election procedures? We were supposed to have seen them in June. The students that are, well, before the summer, I believe, advised us that they had been completed, but they have not yet come to the board for review and approval. When will that happen?
So, Mr. Kaufman, that is not something that requires board approval?
I believe it is according to policy, Ms. Raymond.
The procedures have to, that they develop have to be approved by the board according to our policy.
Okay.
Yes.
And we need to know what they are because we approved the student handbook, which is where that needs to be approved, included, rather. Student handbook should be updated with those procedures. The board approves the handbook, supposed to approve it prior to every year's publication. We didn't do it this last year.
Wait.
Even though we had brought it up several times.
Excuse me, Mr. Kaufman. Our policy specifically says that the board does not approve the handbooks. That's what our policy says. Our board does not approve the handbooks. We don't approve the non-affiliated handbook and we don't approve the student handbooks.
We have in the past.
I know we did.
We have noted on it.
We were in, we were incorrect to do that.
Well, we've done that every year.
That was before your arrival, Ms. Raymond.
I, I'm okay. Everyone can go on the website and look at the policies. I looked it up afterwards. I forget what policy number it is. But nonetheless, I don't have a status update for you on the student elections process and our two student board members left when we went into non-public because they're students and they have to start school at 7:20 tomorrow morning. So, Ms. Fitzpatrick has, I saw her writing it down and she will bring that back. I'm curious if it goes to policy or if it comes right to us.
Comes right to us.
But she and I will discuss that between now.
The way to curriculum.
Okay. Well, I, I'll discuss that with admin between now and our next meeting and make sure that it is on the appropriate agenda.
Thank you.
Okay. I would like to request that we change the rules at this point. The next item is new business. Oh, excuse me. I guess I had written, for some reason I was thinking that was non-public, but it is not, so never mind. So new business, Ms. Hoensie?
Yeah, I wanted a policy to go, to, a proposal to go to policy committee. We just updated the unaffiliated for all discipline records that go on to the assistant superintendents and all the high officials in our district. I wanted a policy to allow board members to put things into the superintendent's file and I'll tell you why. I mean, not only is it comparative to what the others are doing, but this board turns over and if we find, and it would be limited to things like violations of policy or law are perceived. Because as an individual board member, I can contribute that. If I'm not on the board in January, the new board may need to know what the record is. And then there's that political component. Some board members may want to not talk about that things ever happened and I think things that happened should be discussed. So, I, I think this is a good policy. I think it's an equitable one. And also, board members should be allowed to see what's in the superintendent's file. I think we were told that we could see his evaluation because some of us have not seen a final copy of it. That also should be written in, in policy. This file doesn't go to anybody. If our, our superintendent, our next superintendent, our previous one, once he leaves the district, that file doesn't follow him. It's only in use by this board while he's here, is my understanding. Unless I'm wrong and Ms. Agar will correct me.
Dr. Mosley has a personnel file, just like anybody else has a personnel file and the board does not have access to it. You do his evaluation, so you should already know what's in there.
Well, that's the only thing that I know that's in there, but there have been members on this board that have not seen it even though we've asked. But there's, it's a twofold thing to be able to see what's in there, especially for new members.
Also, I don't believe individual board members, you have to act. My understanding is that you have to act as a whole, so one of you individually cannot ask to see the file. I think it has to go through the president of the board because you, the request has to be together.
Right, unless we change the policy. Because that was my recommendation, that we allow individuals to contribute to the file and then when we go for a review, we've got those contributions to look at during the evaluation time. If I'm not here for the next evaluation, you know, my recommendations can be discarded. But at least you, you get to put something in there and.
Nobody can just put something into a file. You just can't do that. It has to be, you have to go through a process and Dr. Mosley has to see it first. Nobody has discipline put in a file, just like that. We, accommodations can go in a file. Somebody can write accommodation and say, you know, this person was wonderful and that can go in there, but it has, you can't just put anything in a file. There are only certain things that go in a file.
Well, we can have the same procedure you do for other people's files.
And that's what I'm saying. Nobody else has.
And I wouldn't want to see social security numbers or any private stuff that's not.
No. It has to be a bona fide document of discipline from the authority. You can't just write notes and put it in a personnel file.
Madam President? Unless we change policy to do so.
That's not a human resource practice across the board.
Okay. So I'm not, I'm not gonna argue this, wait, wait. Okay? My meeting, I get to talk. We are not gonna argue whether this policy is warranted at a main board meeting. It's not appropriate. Ms. Hoensie has asked that her proposal go to the policy committee for review and recommendations. I have already sent her policy proposal to Ms. Fitzpatrick and Mr. Guarino. However, she asked that it also be added to the agenda so that we could, as a board, vote on whether to send it over or have consensus on whether to send it over. Either way, she made a policy proposal. It's not our business to discuss the merits of her policy proposal at this forum. It's our business to do that at the policy meeting, if policy puts it on the air queue.
You're right.
Yes, Ms. Van Twyver?
I, I speak against this totally. This gentleman is our employee and it should be just the board general agreement of what goes into his evaluation. The fact that somebody can put something into his personnel file is ridiculous and I don't think it needed to go to policy. It's ridiculous to even think about this.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm, if the board, if the board would like to take a vote on not sending it to policy, I'm fine with that. Okay, Mr. Guarino?
Thank you, thank you, Madam President. And I, I agree entirely with what Ms. Van Twyver said for the reasons that she said. I, I agree exactly with her. That's what I was gonna say, something very similar. I object to this going to policy.
Okay, so.
Excuse me, I want to say something.
Yes.
Do you need a second for the motion that Ms. Hoensie made?
That, wait, there is no motion.
No motion.
There's no motion and it, we don't have consensus to send this to policy.
Well, asking for a vote on it, essentially by seconding a request or motion,
Okay.
then can vote on it.
Let's treat it, let's treat it as such.
So he's making a motion to send it to policy?
He's making a motion to send it to policy.
I'll second that.
Ms. Hoensie has seconded it. Can we have the roll, please? Since we have already had a discussion.
Okay. On the motion to send it to policy, Ms. Oden?
No.
Ms. Raymond?
No.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Mosher?
No.
Ms. Van Twyver?
No.
Mr. Guarino votes no. Ms. Hoensie?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
No.
I have two yeses and six nos, motion fails.
Okay.
Excuse me, I think I say something.
Moving on.
I'd like to say something.
Yes, Dr. Mosley?
I've sat here for five minutes now and listened to this process work out. And what has been said to the public out there is that there's this mass discipline going on, whether it's a right policy or not. But I've sat here and listened to this go on about insinuation about there should be something in the file or not or this employee is doing this and this employee is doing that. The way that some of these board members treat employees is wrong. The second thing I sat here and listened to was that there was an implication that Dan Donovan didn't do his job because he is, he is dealing with a family matter. And that is pretty offensive. If you didn't get the costing sheet, there's a reason why you got it tonight. And I believe that employees in this district have the right to stop and be with their families first before anything else that happens in this district and that will continue. I'm terribly disappointed by some of the behavior of some of the board members tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Mosley.
Ms. Raymond?
Mr. Kaufman?
Under new business, if I may?
You have another item for new business?
Yes. It'll be brief.
Yes. Well, hold on one moment.
I'd like to get a, some data relative to graduation rates here in the district over the last few years, as well as this immediate past year. Students entering college, students graduating from college, how long it takes them to do that. Same thing with career ready, just what happens to our graduates. I know there's, there's data out there and I would like to get a report. Thank you.
Ms. Porter, can you put that on the curriculum queue to have graduation rates? I don't believe that we are able to track children after they leave our district, but certainly we could get graduation rates.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Just as an update on our brief discussion earlier regarding the student election process and student handbooks and the non-affiliated handbook, if everyone could write down its policy, B, A, A, A. B and three As. No A minuses, all regular As. Okay. Public comments?
I have another item.
Oh, Ms. Hoensie?
I gave you these ahead of time, you took them off. I would like to know if we were gonna send to curriculum. The discussion on, there was a complaint from a gentleman who had a seven-year-old child and he complained about racism in the classroom, reverse racism. I want to know, is that in our curriculum? Is it not in our curriculum or is?
Are you asking me if reverse racism is in the curriculum?
Yes, you got the.
No, of course not. Reverse racism is not a thing, first of all. Second of all, excuse me, we have had this conversation so many times that I've lost my temper now. We do not, as a board, take up individual parent complaints until they have gone through the administrative process. This parent was referred directly to their teacher and I also refer them to the principal. That is the appropriate place for this kind of complaint. There is no evidence whatsoever that there is a district-wide issue because one parent makes one email complaint to us. Okay? So, the procedure is, if a parent has a concern about what is being taught in the classroom, they speak to the teacher. If they feel uncomfortable speaking to the teacher or they are unsatisfied with the teacher, then they go to the principal. If they continue to be unsatisfied, they go to the assistant superintendent. If they continue to be unsatisfied, they go to the superintendent. And then, if they continue to be unsatisfied, they write to the board at BOE@Nashua.edu and request a hearing regarding the superintendent's decision. And then, and only then, do we speak as a board about that individual complaint by an individual.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on.
I have another issue?
Very good.
I've had parents told me that they, and I know you're gonna say the same thing again, about social-emotional learning, they've asked that their child be opted out.
Then they need.
They got no feedback from the principal or the teacher.
Then they need to escalate. That, that's how it works. We just discussed the, the policy again.
Can we, as a board, get updates from where these, these procedures? Okay, we have parents in the, in the pipeline.
It's KE and KEB.
That's fine, but.
We actually discussed them, updated them and approved them earlier this year, within the last eight months.
I'm sure I didn't vote for them. Can we, as a board, get a report back from where some of these things stroll out? What the resolution is?
No.
I, as a board member, I'm curious to know.
No. We cannot. We can only get it if the parent has followed the chain of command and been unsatisfied or if there's an overwhelming community concern, like when 57 people showed up to talk about marksmanship. Then, all of those people can come here and make a public comment. But even in that circumstance, if it's not something that's on our agenda, we're gonna send them back to the appropriate level. Does that make sense? This is not a forum for people to come and individually complain about teachers.
So when they pass a certain threshold, when you have 57 people, and I don't know if they were all.
And they've all contacted admin, then admin should let us know. We're having a problem with this, we need the board's assistance. But we do not micromanage individual employees in the district. We just don't.
Not micromanaging, I just want to know how things are resolved and what's going on. That's all.
Okay. Public comments?
Madam President?
Oh, Ms. Oden?
I just want to remind people, if you are going to be absent, if for some reason you cannot attend a committee meeting, it's appropriate to let the committee chair know so that they can ensure there's a quorum at the committee meeting.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
That is not in reference to you, Ms. Van Twyver. Okay. Now, public comments? Oh, Mr. McKinney. I'm sorry, go ahead. Dr. McKinney, it is very late. I had to get up very early to get my middle schooler on the very early middle school bus, so I apologize. Go ahead.
It'll take one minute. Madam President, I would kindly ask that you send a reminder to all board members around the NSD policy around school board member ethics and outline some of the things that are in dispute tonight and it might be helpful for all members. Just like educators have consequences for violation of ethics at both the district and the state level, I'd ask that we, in kind, remind the board members of the same standard. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. McKinney. Okay. Can we have public comments? There are some people who have been here like all night and I would like to give them a chance to speak. So, the one lady who I knew was signed up has left, but I see Ms. Prince standing up, so. Is there a Miranda? No, okay. Either one, as long as it has a green light. Name, address, please. Oh, it is not on. Try again.
Got it. Sonia Prince, 49 Tufts Drive, nothing to.
Nothing too alarming. I just heard you discussing Pennachuck traffic, and I wanted to add to that, that I've been driving children to that school for seven years. It ended last year. And I always feared for their lives. The older gentleman used to put a little blue X on the ground and would consistently look down nervously as he was trying to direct traffic. But both ways on Manchester Street, buses, cars were zooming by him, like, so close. I just held my breath every time I drove by and tried to slow down as much as I could and crawl around him. I really wanted to build cones all around him to build a little circle so he would have more than that just little X that he stood on. Then the next lady took over, and she was a little bit kind of moving around. And again, I worried about her getting hit by a car. So, not only the children are at risk, but that particular crossing guard was at risk on a daily basis. I do hope they find a solution for that. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Prince. Okay. Anyone else for public comments? Mr. Markou? Not tonight. You're done? Okay. All right. Board member comments? I'm just going to go around. Ms. Van Twyver?
I don't think I have anything to say.
Okay. Ms. Hoensie?
Thank you. As to what Ms. Prince said, they're digging up on Manchester Street. I don't know if we know the reason why. Are they making the road wider? Are they moving the electrical poles off the road? Is there some improvement that would involve help safety? I'd love to know.
None of that is, it's not a safety improvement.
Oh.
It's just water. And if you go to the Board of Public Works website, they have a whole, like, updated list of what they're doing, which is pretty cool.
Okay, great. That's good to know.
Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. So, I hadn't planned on saying anything, but since Dr. Mosley decided to make a comment, the information should have been provided to the board two weeks ago when the board was being updated by the attorney and Mr. Donovan was there. It was not done at the time it should have been. It was requested at that time. We are now, two weeks later. I understand Mr. Donovan had a family emergency earlier this week. It was a whole week, not to mention all the previous time and the timeliness of it being given to the board at that time. So, please, Dr. Mosley, don't overexaggerate. I show no disrespect to Dr. Don, Mr. Donovan. Quite frankly, promptness and following the rules is the example you should be setting, and that's where my problem lies. Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to remind everybody that we ought to speak politely and civilly to each other. Mr. Guarino?
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to welcome the students back and teachers and staff to a new year. And as I said earlier, I hope we have a productive year, a positive year, and that we have a safe and healthy year and that our students grow in both, in both a sound mind and a sound body. And that's, that, I think, is, sums up what public education is all about. And I just want to thank the people in our district who work hard every year for us. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Guarino. Mr. Mosher?
Yes, thank you. No, I agree with Mr. Guarino. We have to watch out for our kids and make sure that they, they grow up with a sound mind and body and that they are recognizing the dangers that may prevail, both getting to and from the school. And I think that's part of the, the family's responsibility to see to it that kids know how to cross the street and when not to cross the street. But I think also that we have to be careful and our own attitudes and everything is, and not be overly verbose when we're trying to make a point, but to respect the other, the other parties and think before you speak so that you know what the heck you're talking about. It's like the cost sheet that was brought up before. And I had my cost sheet two weeks ago. So, I don't know, you know, what to... Maybe something got lost in the mail. Who knows? Okay. That's good. Bye.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher. Ms. Oden?
Thank you. I went to Nashua Goes Back to School the other night. I'm amazed at how many families go there. It was just unbelievable. The number of families there and all of our administrators. I touch base with administrators from every school in the district. So, thank you to Mary Emily Ziegolia. Thank you to, I believe it's George Kater from Nashua Wallpaper. All the volunteers. There were students from South, I believe, from the lacrosse team and field hockey. No, lacrosse and soccer, was it?
Soccer.
Soccer. It was, it was just amazing. We had one new administrator said to me, "I've never seen anything like this. This is just fabulous." So, congratulations. And thank, thank, I thank all of them for what they do for our kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Oden. Ms. Porter?
I just want to thank everybody who got school, got, got school going today. There is so much work that goes into a successful day. And I'm so proud of all of our students and all of our employees who really put students first. And I just want to thank you. I hope you're cozy in bed now and that you get up and have a great day tomorrow. I know it's hard to switch gears from summer into school, but, and thank you, and we appreciate everything that you all do.
Thank you, Ms. Porter. I'll be super brief. I also attended Nashua Back to School last week. Ms. Maluzi Goria gave me the really important job of being the bouncer to make sure that people didn't go in the exit, which is a terrible job to tell little children that they have to turn around and go back outside in the line. But while I did that, I got to spend quite a bit of time with the Nashua South Boys Soccer Team. Mr. Ead was there, doing some volunteering, and also the Nashua South Field Hockey Team. And I just wanted to give a giant shout-out and kudos to those students. At the end of the night, everybody left with their stuff, and the tables were all askew, and there were extra supplies everywhere and the bins of backpacks. And the entire girls' field hockey team and several young men from the boys' soccer team stayed with me 45 minutes late to clean up the library, organize everything so that the librarians would be able to have storytime with the small children at 7:30. And I was just really touched by the citizenship and the generosity of our student athletes. So, I told them that, you know, as a reward, I would mention them tonight at the school board meeting because, you know, everybody wants to be mentioned at the school board meeting. So, there you go, guys. Thank you very much, and best of luck as we begin the new school year. All right. So, that's all for this evening, and I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Okay.
Right.
Motion by Ms. Oden, second by Ms. Van Twyver.
On the motion to adjourn, Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Hoensie?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero. We are adjourned at 9:40 p.m.
All right. Thank you all. Have a good evening.